At this time, I will entertain a motion to exit closed meeting. Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion? All those in favor of exiting closed meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. That is five oh. I need a motion to certify that we only talked about those things included in the motion to enter into closed meeting.
I move to certify the, to the best of each member's knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies.
Please. Okay, listen, hey, guys, guys, let's, let's, let's all respect one another tonight, and I will, Mr. Falk, if you can move the microphone a little closer.
And two, such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, this does recall, require roll call. I apologize. Madam Clerk. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let me make a couple of kind of procedural announcements if I, if I may. First of all, if there's anyone who wishes to sign up to speak who has not, if you come down to Ms. Bocock's table here, you can still sign up. We're going to stop the signups as we get to, before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. So I wanted to give anybody that had not had an opportunity to sign up a chance to do that. And one thing that's going to appear differently tonight from previous meetings is that we, we put a great deal of store in the Character Counts program. And during not only public comments, but during school board comments, you will see on the screen that's projected the six pillars of character. Because as we ask our kids to model those pillars of character, we also want to do our dead level best to display them ourselves. And that goes for those up here as well as those who might be speaking. If you have a sign, I respectfully ask that you not hold it up, out of respect to the people behind you, so that they can see and that they're not, they're not impeded in being able to take full part in the meeting. With that being said, no one else who, who has not signed up who wishes to. I know you might have to work your way out, but we'll wait. Okay, if you will, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask at this point that you all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we're gonna get right into things here. We've got a lot to cover tonight, but we're gonna take as long as it takes. And we will begin with recognitions and presentations. Ms. Holloway.
Good evening, Chairman Breeden, Dr. Schickel, and members of the school board. It is a pleasure to be the host school for tonight's school board meeting and have the opportunity to share so many of the great things about Elkton Middle School. To begin, it is my pleasure to introduce two very special students, our Brittany Lamb, Kelly Coggsdale, Character Count Students of the Month. First, Matthew Eppert. Matthew, would you please come forward? Matthew, do you want to stand right there? Matthew is a sweet, kind, and caring young man with a heart of gold. He is always friendly and can be seen as the student who always greets others in the hallways. Not only is he cooperative, but Matthew puts forth good effort in his classes. His teachers comment that he is a kind-hearted, hard-working student. He completes his assignments on time and does not allow himself to be distracted from his success. He advocates well for himself and loves to volunteer and to do tasks around the classroom. Matthew enjoys learning, and that has suited him well to be a strong academic student. Additionally, Matthew's character helps him, helps set him apart from his peers due to the kindness that he exhibits in every moment of interaction with others. His nonjudgmental attitude, his desire to make everyone feel great. Matthew brings so much determination and drive to what he is asked to do, and he never fails to do it with a smile. Even behind the mask, you can tell that Matthew is happy to be part of what is going on in school. He is an all-around great student who is very deserving of this award, and I am so excited that he was selected. Matthew Eppert.
Matthew, do you have some parents or family here with you?
Parents.
Could you introduce them to us, and would they stand, please? We always ask when we present these recognitions that the parents stand because we recognize that character starts at home. And thank you for the fine job that you're doing with Matthew. Matthew, my dad told me many years ago that as a young man, your reputation follows you, but as when you get my age, it goes ahead of you. And it sounds like you are developing quite a good reputation that will serve you well throughout your life. It is truly my honor on behalf of the school board to present to you a certificate for Character Count Student of the Month, presented to Matthew Eppert this 24th day of January 2022, along with a pin with the six pillars of character on it. And thanks to our, one of our business partners, Klein's Dairy Bar, I have a gift certificate. It's been kind of cold to eat ice cream, but it's good for a while. So we thank you very much, and good luck, young man.
Our other students selected will be introduced by Mr. Roecap, our Assistant Principal, and one of Kelsey's former teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway. This is indeed a pleasure to award this to Kelsey. I did have Kelsey when she was in sixth grade. So this is definitely something that I'm looking forward to this evening. Kelsey, if you want to come one down, you may do so. Kelsey is a charming young lady. Kelsey is a charming young lady with a lot of brains and a lot of talent. She is dedicated and hardworking, but also maintains a great sense of humor. She gets along well with her peers, but is also capable of conversing appropriately with adults. Kelsey has a wide range of interests and is involved in many activities. She is well-rounded and successful in her endeavors. She is always a personable, bubbly, and thorough student. Her smile is contagious and is a wonderful person to be around. She demonstrates methodical, mindful, and meticulous products in class. Kelsey is going to be a successful adult. Throughout this year, Kelsey demonstrated that she was individually determined to succeed through hard work, determination, and a quest to understand content at a deeper, deeper level. She is most definitely a true learner. Her teachers also say that Kelsey demonstrates a natural curiosity and faces new concepts head-on. She brings contagious positivity to each class and can brighten the room. We applaud Kelsey's work ethic and determination as well as her character among her peers. She demonstrates the ability and willingness to help others with a kind and generous spirit. As a learner, she completes tasks on time and to the absolute best of her ability. Kelsey never ceases to amaze her teachers with her creativity and intrigue. Even in the face of difficulty, she finds ways to persevere. She is kind to those around her and assists others when they need help. Definitely, Kelsey is very deserving of this award. Congratulations.
Can we meet your family? They are, there we go. Kelsey, those were some really nice things that were just said about you, and I believe every word of it. You are truly an example for all of us here to follow, for your peers to follow, and we just appreciate you so much for that and for the example that you set. It is my honor to present to you a certificate of recognition as the Brittany Lamb, Kelly Coggsdale, Character Counts Student of the Month, presented to Kelsey Creel this 24th day of January 2022. And again, a pin with the pillars of character as well as a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. I know you'll share that with Mom and Dad, right? Okay, thank you.
There's one more recognition tonight. About two weeks ago, I received a phone call from Mr. Good, W.R. Good, who previously served on the school board. And he wanted to relay a story to me. He mentors a student, and that student was missing from the home at one point. And this wasn't the student who didn't come home from school, he actually left the home. And because he was his mentor, he was connected to that family. And what he told me happened was that as soon as that became known, the principal here at Elkton Middle School, Ms. Holloway, you know, immediately went to the family's home until law enforcement could get there, until everyone was okay. She spent the time with the family to make sure she comforted them, and she made sure that everyone was okay, even though that wasn't a school-related case. And it's just one of those examples, you know, as Mr. Good related, he said, this is one of the examples of what principals do. They go above and beyond to make sure that all the students in their care are taken care of. And so as a result of this, and with, you know, again, the commendation from Mr. Good, I'm awarding Emily Holloway a certificate of commendation for exemplary leadership today. And again, with the thanks of, from that family, from Mr. Good, and from the community.
Thank you, Dr. Schikele. Elkton Middle School has so much to be proud of. Choosing a school presentation for the school board meeting is always hard because there's so much that we want to share. For this board meeting, I felt it is a great time to have my students in the spotlight. Tonight, I am pleased to introduce Ms. Angie Dean and some of our drama students who will be presenting a one-act play. I was fortunate enough to see this performance two weeks ago and enjoyed it thoroughly. Ms. Dean, if you'd please come forward.
Anyway, thanks, Josh, for being here tonight. With typical, when the Holloway asked if we would be willing to recreate one of our one-act plays that we did a couple weeks ago, and I'm really proud to be here with some of my eighth graders. I have two eighth grade classes. And I thought, well, I was choosing a class that has the least number of people since it's not a school day. I shouldn't have each other different names. And I'll have four. I'll have three. So I would like to introduce you to Dylan Tabor and Kelsey Creel Gardner and Emma. And I'm in. And our stage crew could not be convinced that they should take the place and step up. None of them would give the audience a second. So you're stuck with me. Now, let me just say that the last time I performed, I forgot a line. Yeah, it was very. So I have strength. Let me also say, I cannot see through this. So who knows what's gonna happen. They're great. I'm not. Just enjoy.
What about, you up there? How are you supposed to come up there? That's why you're not going to shoot. You're going to get this. That's why you're not going to get that. What, and I'm not getting that.
I've talked about, I mean, I've talked about, yes, I've talked about. I don't get it all the time. Is, where is the complex?
Well, it's not far enough. I don't know where to hear asshole.
I need to know his damn name. Say, what? Next one. Nothing happened with that. You're always really attentive. What we want to know is where to go. No, no. What we need is directions. We're trying to get to New York. My GPS doesn't even show you roads, and I can't get any reception from my cell phone. Well, never mind that. Can you tell us how to get to New York from here? Well, then can you tell us how to get, how to get to Harvard? You don't know much, do you?
Nope. But I'm, well.
What, yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you have anything you like to sell? Furniture, silver? Nothing? No. Say that. I want to hear that. You sure you want, not even, no spare parts? Why? What is that? Do you own him an authentic 1877 sandpaper for $10? Why? There weren't ten, twenty times that. It's 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Are you gonna stay here and make some ditch at his, or are we gonna get down on the road? Do you want to give us directions to the car park?
Nobody wants them. Like, we need to, that's just, we need two steps, direction. Two days, we need that spot, right?
Just normally enough, right? Isn't that the short way? Then why didn't you say so in the first place? I'm just so scared. What's wrong with the Holloway department around here? Surely there must be a sign. There's contact somewhere in the neighborhood. Now, about that short cut? That's crazy. Can we look at it? Well, sure, just go to take a look at it. You don't have a picture of you. All right. How many you, $5 and a half?
$10.
$10 for a piece of paper you used it to cover up the stain on your wall? That's how rich is. Give him anything, now we can get out of here. All right. That's all it's gonna have. Yep. And in perfect condition. You notice it's worth? You think you don't know what they bought here? All right. What's wrong with him? He's fifty bucks for it. I'm guaranteeing to you it wasn't bad at. But if he don't offer anything? Um, he went into the house to get a map. And while he's putting on, we've been a guy that has a hat with a hat in his pocket. Yes. That's the hardy little piece of crap making all this gritty, old gray and brown paper. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And he was wondering, what did he consider that for? We think, you know, he was having a bad first day, you know? Uh huh, definitely. What? The poker? Twenty dollars.
All right.
Twenty two.
This one was also a good one.
Same. So the candy, the person who puts it on that gray, old gray and brown paper, I'm sure she's wanting to go live it to a new point. I'll give you a dollar fifty. I should. But just to make this happen, I'll give you five dollars. Ten dollars. Fifteen dollars. Twenty dollars. Why not?
Well, that's not what we're saying. And if you feel, well, if I use that fan off that chair, it'll be twenty dollars. Are you, you're a fan of old movies?
You and your psychology partner, a dollar or a twenty-four dollar? I like that. Let's get out of here before you decide to buy another one.
Thank you, folks. That was very entertaining. Reminded me of a story that a guy here in Elkton told me one time. He said a guy asked the other fellow if he wanted to sell his car, and he said, sure, I'll sell it to you. And he said, does it use any oil? And he said, absolutely not. And the guy drove into Harrisonburg with it, and he came back, and he said, I want my money.
It's my honor tonight to present a new framework that we have been working on for community dialogue. I know, you know, last year, Mr. Breeden, on a number of occasions, had said, you know, when we have contentious issues, how can we make sure that we get the community involved? And in a way that, again, it's respectful, it's constructive, where we're not just using public comment, where it's not really a conversation, where public comments are designed for the public to, you know, offer their views, but it's not really a back and forth, and it's not really much of a dialogue. And so last summer, I initially reached out to two long-term, longtime educators in Rockingham County schools. And they will both admit, right, that on many political issues, they may not have a whole lot in common. But what they agreed on was that respectful dialogue is needed, that we have to bring all of the information to the table, and then have dialogue involving the entire community around this. And then I worked, we also had, you know, I asked a parent who had previously spoken at a school board meeting, you know, and she was critical of some of the things we did, but again, in a way that showed that there was an intent, you know, to together make things better. And then with Chair Reed at the time, I met, and we talked about how can we facilitate this? How can we make this happen? Because it can't just be us saying, hey, we'll have this process in place. And so in collaboration with Ms. Reed, we reached out to the Center for Justice and Peacebuilding at Eastern Mennonite University. And so the members of this group that then met over the last half year, really, a number of times, to talk about what this could look like. Here are the people that that group includes, and I will ask them to stand because they are here in attendance today. So our parent from the Broadway attendance area, Ms. Amanda Ritchie. We have Mr. Joe Schocker, longtime educator in Rockingham County, and still involved in many of the projects that we have also involved, you know, and one of the first people to really implement a digital safety curriculum and in so many other ways, judging at track events. And so Joe was, was one who agreed to, again, work through this with us. And Dee Grimm, longtime teacher at Turner Ashby, also one of the pilot teachers we had for our digital conversion initiative. Katie Lapira is part of the group as our community engagement coordinator. And then, again, former board member Renee Reed. And then to facilitate the process, we asked Dr. Catherine Barnes from the EMU Center for Justice and Peacebuilding to really guide us through that process. And so those are the members of that group that, again, spent hours together talking about how we can make this work in a way that really will benefit the entire community and to really answer that call that Mr. Breeden and others had made. And so I want to thank all the members of the committee for all the time you've already spent and all the time I know you're going to continue to spend as we expand this project. And I'd like for a round of applause for, for these educators in our community. Now, as for Dr. Barnes, it's important, we mentioned this previously, we sometimes have experts in our midst that we aren't always aware of. And we've said many times, you know, that we want to get advice from those who are really good at what they do. And so Dr. Barnes has worked in more than 30 countries, particularly in Europe, South Asia, Southeast Asia, Central Asia, caucuses, as well as the United States. And it would take up the rest of the evening to list all the conferences and actual peacebuilding and constructive dialogue missions she has been involved in. But here are two I found particularly interesting and really speak to her expertise. In July 2005, in New York, she spent her time at the Global Conference at the United Nations Headquarters, titled From Reaction to Prevention: The Roles of Civil Society in Preventing Armed Conflict and Building Peace. She was involved in the process design, preparation, and facilitation of large panel sessions involving more than 1,000 participants from civil society, government, and IGOs in New York at that time. And she also designed and facilitated a series of deliberative dialogue processes for ethnic leaders inside Myanmar, Burma, leading to a shared vision for future and action agendas for collaborative work. So we felt that if we have an expert in our community who is at the table when actual violent conflicts are resolved, and who can bring people to the table who are that far apart, then she's just a person we want to bring in in our smaller project to really bring that expertise in and guide us through that project. So it's my honor to have someone of Dr. Barnes's expertise as part of a model for respectful and constructive dialogue in Rockingham County. Thank you, Dr. Barnes, and the floor is yours.
Despite all that other work, I'm also from Bath County. So this is not the same as Bath County. It's a lot bigger, but this is also my home, this area. And I, it has been such an honor to work with this advisory group over these past few months. I'd like to express my really deep appreciation for the vision and the dedication that they in all of the hours that they've volunteered with their knowledge and good faith to create this. So tonight, we'll be going over some of the ideas and the work that's been developed so far, looking both why community dialogue, and Dr. Schekel has already addressed that somewhat. Also, what is going to be the focus for the dialogue this year, and how that dialogue can be convened? And so I think the proposal is looking at this as a potential for something that could be an ongoing process for the county, but also some specific things that this year that can be done, can be learned from. As we know, school board meetings like this provide a really invaluable and important way to give community input into urgent issues of the day, and also to make sure that the school board understands the issues that are most important to you. And yet, they're not always the, the best format to really have people sit, listen, understand, discuss, explore, and to really carefully consider the views that everyone has and the ideas for moving forward. So the Community Dialogue Initiative is intended to create the potential for that. It'll be a framework to address challenging issues that affect public education in the county, and to create the basis for respectful and solutions-oriented dialogue for all of the diverse members of the community moving forward. So by having a sense of doing this at a time when there've been so many different things that have come together to, to kind of fracture public trust in some cases, this dialogue process is intended to set a way of doing this. And the mechanism's going to, and I'll describe it in a few minutes, will be through a multi-phase process that first brings together a core group of people, stakeholders, in order to better understand the interests, needs, perspectives, and values that drive the diverse constituencies in the county, and then to open it up to a broader public process in which everyone can be involved who's interested. Want to complement the community dialogue and to ground it in student perspectives and student voices, and also to have research that informs the dialogue into best practices so as to create strategies that will actually address these challenges. So for 2022, the group felt that perhaps the key things that would really be helpful to focus on is how best to create a safe and caring environment for all in the Rockingham County Public Schools students in ways that are consistent with the law, including equal protection, no discrimination on the basis of sex, while also considering the diverse values and perspectives of the Rockingham community. So we're anticipating that out of this dialogue, participants will provide community insight and identify potential pathways to solutions that create an inclusive environment for all students within the legal framework and are intended to protect the security of all. So you're probably wondering, how are we going to do this? Again, as mentioned, we've had, and you'll see, let's see, is there a clicker here? Okay, I'm not sure if there's a little, little light thing. The Advisory Planning Group, you'll see at the top of the diagram, is what we have been working towards for mapping it out. And the next stage provisionally for March and April will be to convene about 20 people who have a deep connection with Rockingham County Public Schools, a shared passion for public education, and who come from really diverse roles and backgrounds and perspectives in the county, who really reflect the rich diversity of the county. This group will engage in exploratory dialogue towards developing an understanding of the key challenges around safety and belonging. And their discussions, their dialogue, will help to frame the public community dialogue that will happen later, probably in May 2022. So those core dialogue group members will, will really be bringing first their stories and experiences that inform their perspectives, and that will help to lay the foundations both for good working relationships within the dialogue group, and also really getting at the concerns that are at the heart of the matter. In the second session of that core dialogue group, we're managing sort of mapping out the key issues, and then in the third session, figuring out what would be the key questions we want to bring to the county as a whole. We then open up for a public community dialogue that could accommodate hundreds, depending on how many people register to participate, in really discussing what are the key issues and ideas. And through small group discussions in the public dialogue, members of the public will thoughtfully consider ideas, sharing responses with the whole group, and will use technology-enabled processes to get those ideas out and to have a chance to poll around them, and really be able to have a chance for the people at the dialogue to be sort of seeing each other's views and seeing if their ideas have been thoughtfully reflected. We'll then prepare a report of those insights, which will be provided to the Rockingham County Public School Board that is solely responsible for all considerations and actions and decision-making moving forward. So that is the basic concept for this dialogue, and I really would like to conclude with a personal note, which is concurring with some of the points that were raised earlier, in this notion that I personally believe that everyone who is here tonight and who's involved with Rockingham County Public Schools loves their children and wants the very best for them. So our public schools are really where we invest in our children and our hopes for the future of our community and of our country as a whole. So I believe that this dialogue process of this sort can create the space in which the community can come together and respectfully listen, talk through the needs and ideas, and work together in ways that bring out the very best of what we have to offer our children. So I'm excited at the prospects of working with you all and what can come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the folks who have given of their time to work toward this as it's, it, it is not meant to substitute for the kind of dialogue we're going to have here tonight, but perhaps to facilitate some of the more contentious issues that we, as a community, deal with. So looking at, looking at all ways to, to make that better. Yes?
Would it be possible to get a copy of your slides sent to the school board so that we have it for reference for later? Thank you very much.
If there are no further comments on the community dialogue framework, we will move next to budget planning for 2223, Ms. Mast.
Chairman Breeden, members of the board, and Dr. Schekel, this evening you have a copy of the fiscal year 2223 budget book at your seat. Over the next couple of months, we will be working through the items in this book and adding to it as more information is received. If you open up your book in the front there, you will see our budget calendar, and you'll notice that it does say there for tonight, January 24th, we are looking at all budget requests, and indeed, that is what we will do here in a minute. And then you'll notice the next time we gather, we will be looking at the governor's budget, so we'll be looking at the revenue side. If you'll turn then to the tab that says expenditures, you'll see a summary of all of the requests. Most of these items on here have a tab which gives detailed for, of the increase of, gives details the increase that is requested. This, we have a couple of slides here, and it is in three different sections. The items here on the first screen are transportation maintenance, instructional, academic support, MTC, and administration. Each of those are, have a tab in your book that you can look at. There's a lot of information in this book. I'm not intending to go over that this evening. It is for you to be able to be reviewing as we start this process. But each of those have a tab. The next section there is basically our salary information, subs, insurance, that sort of thing. If you'll look in that section there, the only proposed increase is a 5% raise for all employees. That costs $5 million. It's a million dollars for every percent that we give in Rockingham County. Other than that, there is no expected increase in any of the other lines for current salaries. The third section there, the second thing I'll point out is all of the ESER funds. There's ESER 3, 1 through 3, a TSS grant, and a ventilation grant. All five of those are a result of additional revenue that we have received this year from the federal government as it relates to COVID-19. There's also various division proposals and personnel requests. Both of those have a tab in your book also. The one tab that I do want to just refer you to this evening is the one that is about the division-wide proposals. Just want to point out a little bit that those are in your book, and they are separated by a purple sheet. And I'll just point out what those are. There are some improvements to certain scales, and that we are looking at the LPN scale, the custodial scale, and the teacher scale. There is also a proposal in there for our supplemental pay scale, which is coaching and extracurriculars. There's a minimum wage issue related to cafeteria monitors that needs to be addressed. There's also the JMU Partnership School, which you'll, if you remember, you received a presentation on that at the last meeting. And there's also a division-wide proposal in there for a middle school at-risk program. Also in the book is a capital projects fund request and a food and nutrition request, which we refer to as our cafeteria fund. There's a significant amount of information in the book, and although we will continue to review information in the future board meetings, you are welcome as you look at this book. If you have questions to, please feel free to call me. I'm also happy to answer any questions or general questions about the budget process you may have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mast. Any questions at this point from any board members?
I'm excited to see that we're talking about coaches' pay going up, so that's, that is very important to me on this budget, so I'm glad it's on here.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
I have a quick question for Ms. Mast. When you, it's just because I think it's interesting for the community to hear, important for the community to hear. So this looks like, you know, when we say a $5 million increase for, for salaries, that this is not a request to have local contributions from our local governing body increase by $5 million or by $16 million for the overall budget, correct?
Correct. That's a really good point. I'll point that out. That $16 million is, we, every year, we collect all requests. It is not our, I do not anticipate that we will have a $16 million request. It has just always been the board, at the board's request, that they receive a copy of all requests that we receive. And so that's what's presented here tonight. This will be pared down greatly, and if you have followed us in other years, you'll know that that is actually the case. And related to our salaries, the governor's budget had a 5% increase in it for what we call SOQ positions. Those are certain positions that the state identifies that they will cover the 5% raise for based on our composite index. We have many other positions that are not SOQ that we will have to fund locally. Roughly, the percent increase, the percentage that the state covers is roughly about 50% of our raise, no matter what the increase is. Any other questions on that?
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Mast. I wanted to, I forgot to mention this during, during my highlights, but I want to thank all of my colleagues. I had sent you individually an email asking you to tell me your top three priorities for this year, what you would like to see happen. They didn't necessarily have to be related to budget, and I want to thank those who have responded. And I'll try to sort of put those into a summary, and we'll talk about them at a later time. But thank you for that. Okay, folks, you all have been sitting and waiting patiently, so I'm going to ask, do you want to just stand up for one second before we start the public comments? Stretch your legs. If you don't, that's fine, but if you do... That's fine. Yeah. We can't, we can't, can't stretch too long. We got a lot of folks to hear from. Okay, Mary Hill. Here. Got it. Yeah, yeah, we can, we can just let everybody have it now. As we begin, as we begin our public comment section, because of the number of people that we have signed up, we will be using our three-minute timer. What I would like to do, the last time we had a crowd this size, there was a tendency when folks, I recognize that it's hard to concentrate on what you want to say when you're watching the clock, okay? So the last time, we had some folks who would shout "time" at the speaker. So if it's okay with everyone here, what I would like to propose is that when, when you're at the 2 minute 30-second mark, I'll just lightly gavel one time. That'll give you an alert that you've got 30 seconds, and then at the three-minute mark, I will gavel twice, and that'll go for everyone that, that is speaking. And I would like to, because we're in this auditorium setting, what I will do is I will, I will call the name of the speaker and the next person that has signed up to speak so that they don't have to, we don't have to wait for folks to make their way through the, through the aisles to get here. So we will have the name of the person to speak and the next person in line. So if we're all, if we're all good with that, we'll, we'll get started. First person signed up tonight is Jackson, and I'm going to also apologize if I, if I mess your name up. Correct me. First person is Jackson Curry, to be followed by Ashley Saunders.
Good evening, Chairman Breeden, board members, Dr. Schekel. My name is Jackson Curry. I'm a sophomore at Turner Ashby High School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. Through all the turbulence stemming from this decisive topic, I felt it in sport, I felt it important to speak here tonight to give you a student's insight on the matter at hand. I, like every other of my peers, am more than just a student. We all have family members and friends that define and shape us, and the last thing we want to happen is for them to get sick or worse. Students should be worried about algebra, history, chemistry, and English, not whether they will bring a virus home that could cause repugnable harm to their family and friends. With roughly 13,000 cases and 190 deaths recorded in Rockingham County alone, this number will only continue to grow. As a son, grandson, and brother, the safety and well-being of my family is one of my top priorities. And as a student, going to school and acquiring an education is also very important to me. Yet with the rising number of cases, security and safety of our teachers, administrators, faculty, staff, and students is coming into question. It is very difficult to learn with teachers out on quarantine. The chances that you're forced to go on quarantine will continue to grow with, with the relaxation of the mask mandate. If the continuation of a mask mandate could save at least one life, prevent at least one case, is it not worth taking? This may be selfish on my part, but it's my opinion we need to support the continuation of a mask mandate. My mother has asthma and many other conditions that put her at risk. My grandfather has been diagnosed with cancer, putting him at risk. My grandmother is in a nursing home. She lives on the same floor as which of, she lives on the same floor which one of my peers works on. This student is constantly in fear that she will contract coronavirus at school and then give it to one of the residents. It may appear selfish to some that I may wish to continue the mandate, but for family, friends, teachers, neighbors, and more, I sincerely ask you from the bottom of my heart that we keep this mandate in place. Thank you again for giving these opportunities to speak here.
Thank you. Next is Ashley Saunders, to be followed by Logan Durenzo.
Hello. I'm Ashley Saunders. I have two children in the Broadway School District, and I have a second grader who has never had a full year of elementary school. Like many of her peers, they are struggling in reading and writing because they are missing huge swathes of their instruction time because of this virus. They are getting their footing. Five days a week is working, and if we take the masks out now, we are pulling the rug out from under their feet again. They have never been to a full school year or known the joy of completing a grade fully. Also, I want to say thank you. Thank you, teachers of John C. Myers Elementary School for keeping my children safe. Thank you, teachers of Broadway High School for keeping my child safe. Thank you to the teachers of J. Frank Killiard Middle School. Thank you to the teachers of Plains Elementary School, to Linville Edum, and to Folks Run for working under conditions that are both scary and stressful, for loving your students enough to show up every day, knowing that the challenges you're facing seem insurmountable. We see you. We love you. We know what you are facing, and you will not face it alone, because we are here to tell you, you are valuable and pillars of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Logan Durenzo, I hope that's correctly, followed by Mark Flanders.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Logan Durenzo, and between my fiance and I, we have children in elementary, middle, and high schools here in Rockingham County, as well as being alumni ourselves. When deciding whether to follow masking guidelines based on Executive Order 2 or SB 1303, I urge you to follow SB 1303. Executive Order 2 is a political stance, and putting children and teachers at risk is a public health issue. The way the order is written, there is just not enough information. How do you plan to know which children are supposed to be masked versus not? The order states it is a parent's choice. If we want our children to wear a mask, yes, we can tell them to not take it off, but children need the guidance... but children need the guidance of their teachers. I don't let my four-year-old go to the store and pick out what we will have for dinner. She knows what we should have, but when she gets in there, she needs guidance. So on top of knowing little Johnny is allergic to peanuts and Suzie is allergic to milk, teachers will now have to remember Johnny wears a mask and Suzie doesn't. It takes more focus off of education. So far, we have had minimal spread in the schools due to our consistent use of masks. Many school systems throughout the county, country, without masks cannot say the same. Last week in San Antonio, 28 school districts were closed due to the lack of staffing for the schools due to a severe COVID outbreak. A week of those children's educations was stolen over a political issue. Are we to give up valuable time teaching children over wearing a mask for another six months? How do you expect to deal with lawsuits when a teacher, child, grandparent contracts COVID and the worst happens? Many students come from homes, I'm sorry. How do you plan to ask parents whether they want their children to wear a mask? Many students come from homes where there is 50/50 custody. In that case, who gets to decide? There are bigger issues to be heard than wearing a mask for six months. If the CDC and WHO are saying, "wear a mask", then I urge you to please take your job seriously in keeping children, our teachers, our administrators, safe, healthy, and in school. This should not be a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark Flanders, followed by Nicole Flanders.
What to say? I could talk to you about how we keep getting strung along and the goalposts keep moving. First, it was vaccines, then it was ventilation, then it was the mandate, then it was community spread. Now it's, we have to do whatever the CDC recommends because of SB 1303. I could talk about how absurd it is to believe that cloth masks that are not worn correctly anyway by either students or staff are somehow magically effective. Even the CDC has admitted that cloth masks are practically useless. I could talk about how delusional it is to think that masks in school will stop the spread when kids carpool together, go out to eat, to Walmart, to parties, and play basketball together, all without masks. I could tell you about my kids' cousins' schools in New Hampshire and Utah that have not had mask mandates ever. Kids are not dying, and teachers are not dying. If they were, you would have seen it on CNN, I guarantee it. They are living life. I could, I could mention how you all hung on every word of every overreaching mandate from the previous governor but seemed happy to completely ignore Governor Youngkin. I could talk about RCPs. I could talk about RCPs pretending to follow all the CDC guidelines when the CDC guidelines call for activities like sports and band to be completely canceled in communities with high spread. Instead, we take our masks off for sports. I could talk about the fact that you keep pretending that without masks, you have no choice but to quarantine large swaths of kids for a few positive cases when that is not true. It is a choice. You can simply do what Falkware County has done and stop contact tracing and quarantining close contacts. I could even talk about the 30-plus counties that have already done the right thing and point to the statement issued by Goochland as an example if you can't figure out how to pull this off. As I, and I could remind you that 80% of Rockingham County parents voted for Governor Youngkin specifically because they wanted an end to these overreaching mandates. But frankly, I don't have time to adequately address any of that, and I doubt that it would really make any difference. You all have likely already decided what you will propose and how you will vote, and allowing us to speak is mostly theater. So here's what I will say. We will no longer plead for you to allow us to parent our children. We are asserting the right given to us by God and affirmed by Virginia law to decide what is best for our own children. I urge you to do the wrong, the right thing tonight, but regardless of what you do, we will do the right thing for our kids. We will be turning in our opt-out form, I have it right here, to Dr. Scheikle at the end of this meeting. And irrespective of how you vote, my children will be in school tomorrow unmasked. I urge other parents to do the same. Stand up for your kids, and if you need an opt-out form, I have 100 of them. Excuse me. The bottom line is this. We will not negotiate or back down on this issue. We have been patient for two years, but we are done. We are, we do not co-parent with the government, and we will, if you choose to ignore our rights as parents, we will simply ignore you. Thank you.
Nicole Flanders, followed by Leslie Miller.
Thank you. My name is Nicole Flanders. I have four children in the Turner Ashby School District. My kids love school. They love their teachers. They love their friends. But they want to be in school, and they want to be in school unmasked. I know these last two years have been hard for everyone in one way or another. In 2020, there were a lot of unknowns about this virus. There was a lot of confusion and even fear. And I truly believe then and now that most people tried their very best to do what was right, even if we did not agree with one another. Two years have passed. We have so much information now on this virus, and we all know now how, how to best care for ourselves and our family in regards to COVID-19. Dr. Scheikle and members of the school board, please put your trust in the parents of Rockingham County. Please believe that we actually do know what is best for our children. There are a lot of good, loving, intelligent, capable parents in this county and here in this room tonight. We have waited long enough and have been patient long enough waiting for the mask mandate to be lifted. Virginians have elected a governor who vowed to let parents have a say and a choice in their kids' education and well-being. After two years of mandates and confusion, this was an answer to our prayers. Governor Youngkin is not taking away any parents' rights to mask their kids with this executive order, but it does give those of us who do not want our children in masks for one reason or another the choice to opt out. It's simple. Everyone wins. Although it is not ideal, if you as a school board feel it's necessary to keep the mask mandate in place, you can do that with the choice for parents to opt their own children out. This should not be about politics, or money, or power, or about who's right. Our children should come first. Please put your trust in the parents of Rockingham County and let us decide what is best for our children and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Miller, followed by Robert Pataki.
Hello, Dr. Scheikle, members of the board. I'm here tonight to urge you to keep mask mandates in place at this time. As a school nurse and parents of children attending county schools, it is the right and necessary thing to do. I've been a nurse, a registered nurse, for almost 25 years. For the past 12 years, I've been the nurse at East Rock High School and the nursing coordinator for the schools that feed into the East Rock area. Being a nurse in an educational setting, I've seen how COVID has impacted both the health and education of students. Students who are positive or exposed must be absent from school, creating a challenge for students, parents, and teachers alike. Every day, besides performing my usual duties, I am now tasked with responding to countless phone calls and emails from parents who are reporting positive and exposed students. Those calls and emails are necessary, but time-consuming. There's contact tracing to be done. Most of our school nurses are working overtime, trying to keep up with the influx of COVID cases, which are now at their highest ever. Just this month, 4,710 positive cases have been reported for Harrisonburg and Rockingham County, the equivalent of 19% of the total amount reported during the entire pandemic thus far. That's a staggering number. Masks are an easy and effective part of a successful mitigation strategy. There are numerous reputable, peer-reviewed research studies that show their effectiveness at reducing transmission. It's also widely known that masking is most effective when worn by all parties involved. In the thousands of students that I have taken care of this school year, not one student has had a health issue related to wearing a mask. If we remove masks from schools now, it will be unmanageable in regards to keeping up with positive and exposed students. The number of ill and exposed students will explode. Countless students will need to be quarantined due to exposure. Those students will be out of school for at least five days. Many students will be quarantined multiple times in the coming months, much to the displeasure of their parents. From a nursing perspective, I'd like to share that all four of our county's school nursing coordinators at all of the local high schools are in favor of keeping the mask mandate. From a parent's perspective, I just want to say that I expect my child to be kept safe at school. Removing masks puts my children in clear danger given the current pandemic surge. Public health takes precedence over personal choice. Wearing a mask shows care and concern for the well-being of others. I think we can all agree, we'd prefer not to wear masks. There's a time when we can and should make masks optional, but that time is not now. I urge you to keep the mask mandate in place.
Thank you. Robert Pataki, followed by Frank Doherty. Doherty, I hope that's correct.
Good evening. My name is Robert Pataki. I'm a resident of McGaquesville, and I have two kids in the public school system. I felt it was important enough for me to say this, not from my prepared remarks. I'd like to humbly ask, did we get a real cloth-and-fiber flag in this room and other rooms where meetings are taking place? I have good friends in attendance whose loved one is serving our country thousands of miles from here as we speak, and the least we can do to honor his and millions of other sacrifices to pledge our allegiance to a real American flag. That being said, I'd like to preface my comments by saying, regardless of agreement or disagreement, I respect you all, and I do not envy the task before you. I'd like to tell a quick story about picking up my kids for doctor's appointments from school just a few weeks ago. As I said, I have a boy in high school and one in elementary school. I went to the high school first, buzzed in as normal, spoke to the staff, chit-chatted with the resource officer, and got my son and left. Proceeded right down the road to McGaquesville Elementary School, walked up and pressed the buzzer, and stated what I've stated dozens of times before: my name, student's name, and why I was there. But unlike dozens of other times, I was made to wait in a foyer, which is kind of like a big fishbowl. As I waited for my son, confused and unsure of why I was made to stay outside, knowing full well I was surely capable of following the same COVID protocols that elementary kids were following inside, a teacher came by with a class full of young students. I literally sat on the outside looking in. It felt strangely like visiting prisoners. I knew many of these students from volunteering as a watchdog and otherwise. I watched as the teacher came by and led the children in skipping along patterns placed on the floor in the hallway. I waved and smiled, forgetting that the students could not see my whole face with the mask on. Some children waved back timidly and awkwardly, unlike their usual happy reaction. Some looked at my, looked my way emotionless, and others just stared at the floor. It was not the upbeat jovial response I have gotten numerous times in the past from these same kids. Besides the glaring inconsistencies between two schools' policy and procedure just miles apart, there is another reason I'm telling this story. This story may seem insignificant to some, but it affected me. It stayed with me, and it was not normal. It was almost Orwellian. It was not how school-aged children routinely act in an environment I just observed them in. And all I could do was think of that scenario multiplied, playing over and over in schools across our county and country. With that being said, I will spare you the pediatric statistics and state I am not minimizing this virus. I lost a dear high school coach to COVID, and my family lost a dear cousin. I am not asking you, the board, to unmask our children. I am asking you to do the right thing and give us back our rights, and we will make that choice. Give us that, and we will unmask our children. We will expose those smiling faces. We will let them breathe again. We will unmuzzle them. We, the parents, will return them to normalcy, and we, the parents, will teach our children about fundamental personal freedoms. I will leave you with a quote from Ben Franklin. "Any society that would give up a little liberty to gain a little security will deserve neither and lose both." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Frank Doherty, followed by Zach Nicholson.
Dear members of the school board, thank you for serving us. I know it's almost an impossible job. Thank you. My name is Frank Doherty. My wife and I have lived in Rockingham County for nearly 30 years, and we're not lost. But I want to talk about three things quickly. The problem we face with dealing with COVID and school safety, servant hood, and a way forward. Two of our sons graduated from Spotswood High School. My wife, Linda, has taught in the challenge program for 18 years. I volunteer spending time with several boys at Riverbend Elementary School one day each week. I'm a former fourth-grade teacher and elementary school guidance counselor, and I am very impressed with the quality of teaching and care for children and colleagues that I've observed at Riverbend. Being a teacher is by far the hardest job I ever had. Our county is still in the middle of a major public health crisis. Over 13,000 cases in Rockingham County so far. 100 per day are getting it. Over 200 have died in, from Rockingham County. Our teachers and administrators are facing many crises. They, the fear of becoming sick and passing on the virus. Children can spread it. My two-year-old granddaughter got COVID at daycare and passed it on to her father, my son. Children are being left behind academically. I have worked with fourth graders who are adding, whoa, sorry, who are adding on fingers, okay? It is an educational crisis, absolutely. And parents are afraid that their children are not safe and falling behind. Let me talk about servant hood. I'm a follower of a Jewish carpenter who lived more than 2,000 years ago in Palestine. He's God. But he gave up his rights to stay with his Father in heaven to become a servant to us. He cared for the sick, the poor, and especially loved these little children. I believe that we are called to maybe postpone our rites and serve others by striving to find the best way to serve and teach our children in a safe manner. That means respecting the needs of parents, your children, and adults who work with them. Moving forward, uh-oh, I go a quick pass. We are in the midst of a major health, public health crisis. It's not a political issue. It's an educational issue. My suggestion to the board is to maintain the masking requirement through the end of the school year, but maybe just end it after spring break, depending. I suggest you form an ad hoc committee that reports to the board, consisting of parents, high schooler, teacher, and ask them to come up with strategies as well as metrics. You get the right metrics, you get rid of the mask. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Folks, I do want to be respectful of your opportunity to, to conclude your thoughts, but let's do the best we can to stick to the time limits that others are adhering to. Zach Nicholson, followed by Lisa Darrow.
I'm Zach Nicholson. Before I begin, I want to mention that I'm fully aware of the rules for public comment and that there's a difference in personal attacks and criticizing one's job performance. Over the last few years, I've watched the actions of many board members very closely. We all know that certain members on this board have a history of either belittling parents either on social media, and more recently, I feel they, with Matt Cross, the new board member. Mr. Breeden, you posted on social media just three days after the last meeting about the Dunning-Kruger effect and quote, "A cognitive bias where people assume they have superior knowledge but actually don't, and certainly not enough knowledge to admit it." I think it's fair to assume this is in regards to Mr. Cross's comments last meeting and perhaps to some parents here tonight concerning masks. We all know Mr. Folk's history on social media as well, but I will not stand idly by and allow this board to belittle other members or parents under the title of chair, even if they go by the Ert brothers, Shake and Bake, or whatever, when the reality is they should go by Lloyd Christmas and Harry Dunn. No, this board doesn't get to preach to me or the masses for the last two years on how well masks work, advocate for vaccine, shame those who don't believe in the science, then suddenly doubt that science you proudly stood on for the last two years all because Virginia didn't elect a Democrat, all while you guys proudly pimp and prostitute at these students for funding through CDC grants with Vista and another $10.8 million for the next round of CARES Act. That's by a DNR article, by the way, July 10, 2021. Not to mention the perversion of data by politics, agenda, and money and power with the CDC who has lied about everything from case numbers, reporting depths, and effectiveness of the vaccine. If this board does not follow the EO, you send a very clear message to parents tonight. It says, "Forget what I know in the 40 years of being on this planet. Forget being a father. We, the school slash government, know how best to assess risks for your child better than you." Mr. Breeden, in the last meeting, you said that as a parent, there were times you had to seek other professional advice, whether medical or religious, correct? My question to you, this board, and every parent here tonight is what's the point of following the law concerning CDC recommendations when they haven't been completely honest in their concerning CDC recommendations when they haven't been completely honest in their data? My point is, if a doctor keeps giving me medical advice for my child that either isn't helping or the truth is more opaque than transparent, then it is my duty and fundamental right in this state and this nation to be the parent and voice for my child. You want to wear a mask, you can do that under the CEO. It is the ultimate compromise. You want a vaccine, you can go get it. But you cannot punish students or parents because they don't choose your preferred method. So I'll ask, which law do you want to violate? Shall we violate the law that follows CDC guidance of Virginia Code 1-240.1? It says, "A parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning their child's upbringing, education, and care, along with the area that supports this." Look around you, kids are mostly unmasked everywhere but school. Last August, my kids played tackle football unmasked during the Delta variant, right here through Rockingham County Parks and Rec. I'm not questioning their policy, but I think you get what I mean. Regardless of what this board decides, I will be using my right under Virginia law and the EO to send my kids to school masked since January 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Darrow, followed by Adam Miller.
School board and Dr. Scheichel. I am Lisa Darrow, proud parent of my son Benjamin, who is an eighth grader at Montevideo Middle School. I just wanted to share the story of my son, who we call Bear. 12 years ago, I walked into a filthy, excuse me, I'm speaking, bathroom in an orphanage in Vietnam and vomited. Vomit, it's such an ugly word, but a word that needs to be heard and considered later in my story. I had just met my son, and the warning of a social worker from the United States weighed heavy on my mind, warning me that we did not have to finalize an adoption if our son was not well or healthy. In my heart, I knew something was wrong. But to me, he was beautiful. So I walked out of that bathroom and right into an official Vietnamese adoption ceremony. Through many years of joys, sorrows, and diagnoses, my family and I are raising a son with autism and other post-traumatic stress disorders. I'm sure he's getting a few more. The fall after the pandemic started, Rockingham County allowed special ed children to attend in person. We were so thankful, and we practiced with him how to wear the mask. In November that year, something happened that profoundly changed my view of the imposed mask mandate. One day, the school bus pulled up, and I noticed a flurry of movement as the driver came off the bus and Bear was covered in vomit. Vomit that I quickly learned had been held inside his mask and on his face until he stood up to exit the bus. He told us he had vomited at the railroad tracks. He sat with a vomit-filled mask stuck to his face for over five miles. By the way, special ed buses have a driver and an assistant, and only four other children on there. With a mask on, how could they have known if my son was aspirating his own vomit? The most danger my son has incurred during this pandemic was not from his low-grade fever in January of 2021, when he had COVID, but from a mandate imposed upon him. Our Commonwealth has spoken and elected a governor that wants to give parents the right to choose what is safe and best for their children. I deserve the right to decide what medical device is worn by my child. I deserve the right to choose what is best for him. Board members, if you do not vote to follow the executive order, I promise myself and thousands of other parents will not waver in our pursuit for freedom from this physically and psychologically unsafe mandate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I explain, thank you, that I think Mr. Cross wanted a point of personal...
Yeah, I'm about to pee my pants. I just need to, I'm sorry.
That's what I was, that's what I was being told. So we will, at this time, Mr. Miller, if you will indulge us, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Sure.
And we'll come back to this.
The Larnac curve, this job? That was right there, I said, I'm taking notes.
Don't get me to you.
Yeah. I'll take the blame from Sarah.
What's that?
Yeah, I know. No, I apologize. Let me apologize to Sarah on that, please, before we get started.
Thank you, Oscar, for going to get that.
What is that name right there? Can you read it? Is that Paradise?
Yeah, I would say Paradise.
You think that's Paradise right there? I couldn't tell it was a P or a D.
Yeah.
Then I can blame it on him for throwing.
We got Miss McQuilkin. Did we see what she was saying?
Yeah. She might know the person, I don't know. Okay, well, we're gonna go with Paradise. We have contention.
Okay, folks, if we can sort of gather back in here. Okay, if we can...
Ms. Darrow, I do apologize for interrupting. That was my fault. I reached over to Dr. Scheichel and asked him for a bathroom break, so, please. My fault, not their fault for that.
I would also like to add that sometimes I'll ask one of my colleagues the name, because I didn't hear it, and I want to make sure I get your name. So if you can say your name when you approach, that'd be great, too. Thank you.
Okay, let's pick back up with Adam Miller, followed by Emily, is it Paradise? Sir, go ahead.
Hey, good evening. Adam Miller, I have two daughters in Peakview Elementary School. I appreciate icing the kicker there for the restroom break. That is much appreciated. So I had a few things written down here that I wanted to touch on, but the fact is, most of them have already been touched on throughout the course of this evening, and I'm sure some other ones had it as well to go over. Who would have thought, two and a half years ago, we would have been sitting here having this conversation, looking at each other? I know I sure didn't. Despite the fact I'm one of those guys you might want to call a conspiracy theorist, I wouldn't have thought this. I like to look at things from a higher view than just where we're at right now, right in front of us, from a two-foot view above it, and that is more of a 5,000-foot view. Take a second to look back, and how did we get here? You look back, and you start looking at some of the fear that was pushed upon us. I was guilty of it, my family was guilty of it, and we took more precautions than I would have liked to have taken, but we didn't know. We were told some things that, over the course of time, the zombie apocalypse didn't come to pass. More and more data started to show itself. Just recently, the CDC said, among ages of 5 to 11, the mortality rate, while awful to quote, is very pertinent to this, is .00012%. Again, those are precious lives. I do not want to discount those, but the fact is that we need to take this into account. At this moment, right now, this is about personal liberties. It's about overcoming fear. There was a, there was a mention of a word earlier, and that was anxiety, that was brought up. Those things all coincide around what we're doing here. I travel quite regularly for work, and I can tell you, going across the middle line of Main Street in Bristol, Tennessee, one side required masks, the other side didn't, was wide open. It was one middle, one main line on Main Street in Bristol, Tennessee. Quite a few other states, they haven't had these strict requirements. The children there are happier, and this is something we need to consider more than all these statistics, is the mental health at the moment. That is one of the most important things that continuously gets overlooked, and that tonight must be considered. So tonight, we have a, we have a chance to move forward boldly, not in fear, and make the right decision for everyone moving forward. Are we the shining light for our community and our children? Or are we going to go ahead and take the path of least resistance? Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Emily, was I correct on your last name?
Yes.
Okay. We, I couldn't tell if it was a P or a D, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Next will be Nicole Reedy.
Thank you all for what you do and for hearing me tonight. My name is Emmy Paradise, and I'm a mom of children in Rockingham County schools. But I also work in healthcare and have been on the front line since the beginning of the pandemic. And unfortunately, our local hospitals remain overwhelmed due to the current COVID surge. I fully believe there will be a time to get rid of masks. That is the purpose of vaccinations and everything else that we've been trying to do in the community. I just don't feel like it's the right time yet, as we are in the midst of a surge. Our community percent positivity rate is nearly 40%, with a high transmission level. We used to be concerned when the percent was over 5. And masks, when worn by all parties, are proven to decrease transmissibility. I feel very strongly about assessing the need for masks on a monthly basis, based on our own community levels of active COVID spread. The primary goal, for me, and I feel like for most parents, is to keep our children in school. Getting rid of mandatory masks too soon could directly and negatively impact our children and teachers' ability to continue their learning process. This could also increase the burden on our local hospital systems that are already strained. I hope we can step away from our own individual beliefs to make the best decision for our entire community based on the information we have. It's heartbreaking to work with patients who regret not getting vaccinated as they struggle to take a breath. I don't want that to be our county if we choose to get rid of masks too soon and end up with closed schools. Sick children are now kids are the ones who miss out on their learning process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Nicole Reedy, followed by Amanda Thompson.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Reedy, and today I stand as a voice for my seven-year-old and other kids with special needs. My son has a hearing deficiency. From the time he was... Since he was born to four years of his life, he couldn't hear at all. He read lips, and we communicated at home in a way that worked for me and him. I finally got in with an amazing doctor and audiologist, and then got an amazing sped team at Audubon Elementary. At age five, he was placed in hearing aids and started speech right away with Rockham County. The following fall, he started pre-K and was excelling, and then COVID hit. School was shut down. We took kids out of school. When we returned, we were recommended to wear a mask. He's struggled since. Wearing a mask with hearing aids, used to reading lips he can no longer even see, his education declined fast, and this year, he's repeating kindergarten. Nowhere even close still to move into first grade, and I blame the mask for all of that. I say that to say this: While I believe COVID is real, at some point, as a parent, you decide if wearing a mask for protection against the virus with a 99.9% survival rate or my child's education is more important. And that should absolutely be my choice, as Governor Youngkin has stated in his executive order. So I ask you, school boards, take in all scenarios and what's best for all children. After all, no child left behind, right? Let us, as parents, not you as a school board, decide what's best for our children.
Thank you. Amanda Thompson, followed by Paul Short.
Hi, my name is Amanda Thompson. Dr. Schike and members of the board, thank you for hearing us tonight. Ms. Lohr, you're my representative from Broadway area. We do not align politically, but this morning, we exchanged some emails back and forth that were kind. You listened to me, and I can't tell you, as an educator, how much that meant to me, to just have you listen and to be able to communicate with you. It made the world, it made a world of difference to me. First, I want to say thank you for continuing to stream these school board meetings. I know that it's not always technologically easy, but I've watched almost every meeting since you guys have started, and I feel much more involved in the whole process. Originally, after the last meeting, my friend and I decided we were going to come in person to this meeting before Governor Youngkin made his mandate, because we wanted to support the school board. We know that what you do is difficult. You sit up here every two weeks and have people come up and yell and scream at you, and I'm very sorry that the public is acting like that tonight. Instead, I'm here... Instead, I am here in support of teachers. Over the last week, I've watched my fellow educators, administrators, and other school staff be threatened, mocked, and berated. Tonight, I'm going to speak to you and the audience in support of schools. Our schools are full of wonderful, caring individuals from all political backgrounds. They don't come to school to brainwash or indoctrinate children into believing things that go against your own family morals. Instead, all school staff wants is for children to come to school, be safe, and to learn. This morning, I wrote an email to my teachers and school administrators, showing them love and compassion, and I would encourage everyone here to do the same thing, regardless of how the board intends to vote tonight. Your schools, your teachers, they need your support. They don't make the decisions up here, the school board makes those decisions. And I cannot tell you how hard it is for children to go to school and have to deal with the anxiety that goes on when there's contention between parents and schools. To the four veteran members of this board, I know you will do your best to keep our children safe, and I have watched that throughout the course of this pandemic. I appreciate all you and Dr. Schike have done throughout the pandemic and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Short, followed by Nancy Bassett. Mr. Short? Call for... Last call for Paul Short?
You might have to put an extra couple of seconds on there. I don't know how my name wound up on there, but I stutter. I would... Man, I don't know where to start. There's been a lot of very good points that have been brought up in this dialogue. And I can agree on several things on both sides. And as someone who has a speech impediment, I can fully understand why a mask could get in the way, especially someone who has a hearing disability, 100%. That being said, my main concern is if we go through with losing the mandate, what happens? Because I want my children to wear a mask. I personally would like all children to be safe all the time, and if a mask is the easiest and simplest thing to make that happen, I don't see why it's an issue. There are obviously other things that come up with that. So my question to all of you would be, if I would like my children to wear a mask to keep them s-s-s-safe, do we separate the kids? Because that's segregation, and that's a whole other issue right there. Then you're going to have masked kids and unmasked kids running around, and kids just want to be kids. I can agree with everybody that has stood at this podium, on one level or another. Whether I disagree with them on other things, I can agree that everyone that has stood right here and spoken truly, to me, has seemed like they have the kids' best interests in mind. I'm concerned about where we go forward and how we do keep the kids being kids, masked or unmasked. You know what I mean? If it goes through, it goes through. But how do we keep the kids feeling good about themselves, feeling normal? That's about all I got to say. Thank you all.
Thank you. Nancy Bassett. And is Nancy Goulart here?
I will be speaking for Rockham County Education Association and for Nancy Goulart, who could not be here tonight. So Chairman Breeden, school board members, and Dr. Schike. As you know, I'm Nancy Bassett, president of the Rockham County Education Association, and I'm here to speak regarding the masking in schools. We know there is mask fatigue, and we want it to end. And many of us want it to end. But wearing masks in schools is an important step in keeping our students safe. And as of August 12, 2021, a public health order requires all individuals aged two and older to wear masks when indoors at public and private K through 12 schools, regardless of their vaccination status. And you can see that on the VDH website. We respectfully request that this order be followed, not only to keep students safe, but to keep the schools as a safe environment for them, for the teachers, and even for the families. And from Nancy Goulart, please continue requiring masks for everyone in the school building. Many parents and teachers have strong feelings on both sides of this issue, but many will not attend the meeting on Monday evening for numerous reasons, such as they have young children at home, work schedules that don't allow it, or health concerns. Please know that our prayers are with you all during this meeting, and in hopes that everyone will discuss calmly and that the decision made will be best for the safety of all persons involved. It seems evident that mask-wearing thus far has been highly successful in keeping staff and students safe. Please consider continuing to do so. And it's signed, "Thank you, Nancy Goulart, who is a concerned parent in Elton and who has a family member who works in the hospitals." Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I didn't call the next person up. So next is Patrick Fritz. And I have a name on here that's been crossed out and initialled, and I don't want to call that person's name if they don't wish to speak. But if you are that individual and you wish to speak, would you raise your hand? Your name is... All right, well, this is a different name than that. So Patrick Fritz and Chuck, is it Dubey?
Dubey, yes, sir.
Dubey, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Fritz. I have three children in the Broadway District, two in high school, one in middle school. Lots of parents here tonight are passionately concerned about what messages and the things that our children are hearing in the school. I'm not interested in the great mask debate. It really doesn't matter to me. The law is the law. As Ben Shapiro says, right, the facts don't care about your feelings. The lawyers are going to figure this out, they're going to tell us what to do, and I have faith that the school board is going to do what's right legally and factually. No, what I'm more concerned about and would like to address is the dress codes in the school and allowing them to be unevenly applied to spare people's hurt feelings and get away with bringing vulgar material into our schools. One board member in particular, on multiple occasions, has strongly condemned a specific book that's in our libraries because of a specific word. Again, I think that's a bit of pearl-clutching nonsense, but we can disagree about that. I think if that's the standard that we want to hold as a community, we can disagree, but we can continue that type of discussion, that's fine. But back to the dress code and vulgar language. I've given to Ms. Lohr a printout of some things that we found in the school. I've got the examples of these shirts that have caused students to be dress-coded, meaning they've been either told to cover up the shirt, change their shirt, or go home, leave the building. None of these shirts explicitly have any vulgar or profane language on them. It's easy to draw inferences as to what they mean, and I understand how some people with delicate puritanical sensibilities may be offended by them. And again, I'll be clear, I don't have a problem with them. It's just words, it doesn't really mean anything. I'm sure they've heard even worse than that from, well, frankly, most of you. But the fact is, we force kids to take them off, cover up, or go home. I understand many parents are here tonight that are frustrated with perceived hypocrisy and double standards. And I do agree with that. So I'm asking that if we have to have a dress code, which, again, like I said, I think is pretty dumb, but if we do have to have one, that it be applied fairly. As we can see from Figure 1, nothing is explicitly stated, but its meaning is clear. The same is true of Figure Number 2, and that totally borders on vulgarity, but not explicit. Figure Number 3 is pretty marginal, but again, acronyms have two different meanings. BLM can mean the Bureau of Land Management or something else. Despite the lack of explicit or vulgarity or profanity, a student has been dress-coded for each one of those. I have to assume that the board and admins have decided that they still think that's appropriate. So with that said, I saw seven students with that last one, and I want to know why that even though it's not explicit, we're dress-coding children and sending them home, but allowing them to wear that fourth document into the school?
Thank you. Mr. Dubey, followed by Brian Creel.
My name is Chuck Dubey, and I'm here speaking on behalf of my two kids, who are in the Cubran Elementary School District, as well as those parents and anyone else who lack the courage and confidence to stand up here. I just have to echo the words of the executive order by our new governor. And when I came to this meeting, I'm actually the whole meeting, just staring at these pillars here, these six pillars. And if I can comment on some of those, citizenship, as a Virginia citizen, I believe it is our responsibility to follow the order given by our governor. I could stop there, because that's pretty powerful. When we started the meeting, we gave the Pledge of Allegiance, and as a Christian, I recognize that our authority is given by God. As a parent, it is my responsibility to care for the well-being of my own children, and I love how the governor outlined that in the executive order. And it's also commented on in the Virginia Department of Health, the interim guidance, if that's what you use to form your rulings and your decision. But then also, in terms of caring at the beginning of the school year, I was at the... I guess I connected with some of the board members, expressed our concerns with both of our kids, who wear glasses and struggled all last year with wearing the mask. But there was... I was never asked any question, how my kids are doing, what we could do to mitigate it. And that was a challenge, because I was just given, well, this is what is being done, deal with it. And the other option is wear a full-face shield, which we understand that would have been a real struggle. So unlike the CDC recommendations, I believe the executive order is not a recommendation or a suggestion, but something that we, as Virginia citizens, should follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Brian Creel. I have several children in the school system.
Mr. Creel, before you start, let me just say that next up is Stephen Sofensky. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge and thank the governor for bringing this cause back to the community for discussion. I do think that that is a healthy activity, just in case you can't hear me. I do want to make it clear that it is my position that we should continue with masking, however. I have a number of perspectives that I think are unusual. I have done a good bit of international travel, and I have seen SARS-1 communities before the pandemic started. About 3% of the people in those communities continue to wear masks of their own accord. I see that as foreshadowing that we should expect and be more indulgent of our own community for the individual decisions that people are making concerning masking, including at the school system. I also have had the pleasure of being a technologist with my wife, working on a number of the medicines for COVID, vaccines and the antiviral oral medicine. That has been a privilege. It's meant working a huge amount of time. But what it's made me aware of is that... Acutely aware of is all of the effort that thousands of people have been putting into keeping us safe, mainly the healthcare providers, first person, the nurses, the doctors and such, but also the people that are creating the medicines that we are trying to take benefit of. However, the most effective thing is a mask. If we work as one, united we stand, other countries have shown how effective isolating can be. No, I am talking to you, that's why I'm facing you.
May... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We want to be respectful to everybody, sir. Continue.
Okay. Now, the other perspective to share is my wife, who has been working on the vaccines. Come July, she got cancer. And that means she's immunocompromised. So now we get to live the other side firsthand, and I can share with you that she's not here. She spent about 10 minutes so that she could see our daughter get the award, and so that she could see her do her performance for you. But because of her concern about being in groups, she's not here to speak for herself. And I think there's a large portion of people that are not here being vocal because of their concern of their vulnerability. We're country people. If our neighbor needs hay baled and the hay brought out of the field, we give them a hand. If their cows get out of the pasture, we go in and we help them get the cows back in the pasture.
Time.
Wearing a mask is exactly the same. That's my point.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Stephen Sofensky, followed by Chelsea Wine.
Mr. Chair, can I ask that? This is public comment, but they are supposed to be
Sure.
speaking towards the board. And no one came here tonight to get lectured.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for allowing us to make our public comments. And thank you for your work on the board. I am Stephen Sofinski, and I have two children in the Rockingham County Public Schools. Wearing masks can help prevent COVID-19 spread and affliction. Asymptomatic people with COVID-19, that is to say, those people who show no symptoms like fever or cough, do and can spread the disease to others, including the vulnerable adults in our community and in our homes, parents and grandparents. Now, many families have already based their educational choices on the information available to us at the beginning of this 2021-2022 school year. My family has made our decision to have our children attend school in person based on all of the safety criteria, including the mandatory use of masks in the school building. Please continue to require and enforce a safe in-person school experience for our children, including their parents and grandparents, by requiring and enforcing the wearing of masks during the school day. Keep the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea Wine, followed by Mark Wingfield.
Hi, good evening. I don't have anything big planned out for a speech. First off, Matt, welcome. It's good to have you here with us. Secondly, executive orders aren't executive requests. For the past two years, I have followed executive orders that I highly disagree with. So following our new executive order, follow it, even if you don't agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Wingfield, followed by Brooke Garrison.
All right. All right, hello, guys. I did not come here tonight planning to talk. So I signed up just in case I heard something that I wanted to respond to and I'd be able to. And so I'm just going to speak for about three minutes on whatever's on my mind right now. Starting with this. As a pastor, I know that your job is difficult because for the last two years, I've had to do the same thing you guys have been doing. I've had to make decisions about masks, about whether we're staying open, about whether we're not, all that stuff. And certainly, it's been difficult. And you certainly cannot please everybody. So first of all, we'll start with that. You've got to just decide to do what's right. You can't worry about what everybody is saying. But you know, all these comments tonight have really just been, at least for the most part, opinion. I mean, everybody's got a good one. I have heard very little facts, to be honest, tonight. I've even had people come up here. I've heard people that are experts, so to speak, that really haven't said much of anything other than the same thing I can say. I've got an opinion on it, too. You guys understand that this executive order is not an opinion. I mean, we had to go by those of us who obediently sent our kids to school with masks for the last year and a half because you guys said so. I didn't complain about it. I came in tonight with a mask in my pocket fearing I need to wear one. I was glad I didn't because if I'm told to wear one, I usually do. Okay? I don't have a problem with that. But when it comes to what we're talking about right now, you guys have to put any opinions aside and just go with what the governor, who we elected, says. It's not that hard. And you know, for me, the whole thing, I have a lot of compassion for those people wearing masks. Honestly, I don't believe that everybody wearing masks is doing so because they're afraid. I don't believe that everybody who's not is doing so because they're selfish. I think everybody has their own reasons based on their own convictions and what they have decided upon based on their own research. But the inconsistency that's been talked about here tonight does baffle me. You know, we'll go to a football game, and a teacher of my kid who's not masked, and my kid's not masked, comes up and hugs her on the side, which I'm thankful for because my special ed student needs that kind of encouragement every now and then. But on Monday, they got to have masks on, be separated. You see all the kids there in that one section there at the football game cheering all over each other, no mask on. And yet, Monday, they go back, they got to be masked. And even here, it amazes me, it's bizarre how many people are here wearing masks and afraid to go to school tomorrow or send their kids to school. But they're here tonight. This is not any different. I mean, it really is weird to me. It's bizarre to me that so many people here say that they're afraid to go to school tomorrow or send their kids to school. You came here voluntarily to be with 3/4 of people that don't have masks on. That doesn't make any sense to me. So.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Before you start, Ms. Garrison, Ms. Hill, you were on the list and checked off. Did you want to go back on the list? Okay. All right, then it'll be Brooke Garrison, followed by Mary Hill.
All right, everyone. Many of us as families, we all walk free as individuals in our personal lives. And then unfortunately, our childrens have to go to school and feel jailed come Monday every week. And right now, I feel that we're at a crossroads to decide what is the new normal. And a little bit about my story is that I have three children, one a recent graduate from Broadway and two that go to Broadway High School. And two of my sons are athletes. And ma'am, I really do want to talk to the crowd because that's part of my story, is that I've been fighting this fight for about two years now. And when I come to school board meetings, Oscar Schleichel has his face buried in a laptop, and he's not giving you eye contact. And to me, transparency is trust, and eye contact means everything. Character counts, my friends, and I would like you to please exhibit that. So for that, that is the reason why I want to talk to you and not talk to them. All right? So my childrens are wrestlers. And when you think of what wrestlers have to do, that totally breaks the narrative of this whole pandemic. Okay? And when this first happened and school shut down, it wasn't within a few weeks that I thought, I need to get my butt working or this is going to ruin my kid's sport. So shortly after March, I was already going to our county board and asking for an accelerated reopening and a mask sanctuary for our county. And do you know what our county supervisors did? They let me talk. I was supposed to be limited to five minutes, but they let me talk for about 20, 20 to five minutes. And, uh, thank you. And they chose not to vote on that. Sally Wolf Garrison, when I called her about my concern, this was shortly after, it was only closing for two weeks. This was the summer, even before they could give me the counts of virus counts and sickness and illness accounts. She already knew that school's going to be shut down for the next year and was already telling me to supplement my kid's education if they were going to public school. So this has nothing to do about virus counts. This has nothing to do about masks and illness. This was lockstep. And so that's the reason that I want to talk to you. I want to encourage you to talk to your kids about civil disobedience and going to school without masks. Welcome them, challenge their teachers that they can talk to their, they can call their parents. But document all the school boards, the administrators, anyone trying to enforce masks. Likewise, I also left a pile of the opt-out masks on the table. But all of these people, I've done FOIA requests. They all have contracts to defend the Constitution of the United States. And so we need to understand that. I welcome anyone that wants to team with me. Let's find creative ways. There's,
Time.
BondsForTheWin.com. I'm already working for getting copies of their bonds.
Time, please. Thank you.
But my name's Brooke Garrison. I'm here to be your team.
Thank you. Mary Hill, followed by Holly Cave.
Hello. My child, one child now, goes to Broadway Middle School. I have since pulled my daughter out of kindergarten from John C. Myers, and I would like to tell you why. I just have about three things. I've never done this before, so I'm nervous. I walked in with a very open mind to meet the teacher night. The only school in our area of five elementary schools that required a mask. I walked in, there were police there, there were staff there pushing the masks. I grabbed mine and my daughter's. We go in the school. She has apparently a teacher who believes in the mask. So we wear our masks as we go in. My child was not allowed to wear tennis shoes to school. Is that a Rockingham County school policy? I think not. She had to wear hospital coverings. She had to wear hospital coverings in kindergarten or slippers. Okay? That's one instance. I had had enough. She got pulled that day, and she's in a co-op in a church. Thank you, Jesus. I would like to also tell you what happened tonight at my eighth grade son's basketball game that we played Thomas Harrison. And I understand the rules that Harrisonburg kept their mask mandate. Not the county. I've been in every single basketball game of my child and has never once wore a mask. It is not the law. It is a mandate. Until somebody can show me the law, it will not be happening. Not for my child either, no matter what you choose tomorrow. Since then, those boys came to me. The principal came to me and said, well, if you don't put a mask on, I'm going to have to call the police. I once told him to call the police. I'm looking at five police officers here unmasked. They did not come. He stopped the basketball game. He stopped it. From what I'm understanding, that is against the VHLs rules. He has no authority to stop that game. But for our county boys in Broadway and the Thomas Harrison boys, I walked out and I waited in that parking lot till the game was over. I then went in, congratulated my team for winning as they took off their masks. 25 boys wore their masks today, some of them on their face, some of them on their chin. Right after I left, they started taking the masks off the players. What the athletic director from Thomas Harrison said, the players should not be wearing them as he is one of their coaches. That is another thing. One more thing I would like to add with all of this two-year mask mandate and you all pushing the mask mandate. Mr. Schleichel, you went on your honeymoon in a federal airplane without a mask on. My son will not be there tomorrow with a mask.
Thank you. Holly Cave, followed by James Satva. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Holly Cave. My husband and I reside here in Rockingham County. We have four school-aged children. Last than 48 hours ago, there was an online petition placed. It was placed on one social media platform, one, not 2, 3, 4, or 19. And in about 45 hours, we have signatures and signatures and signatures and signatures. I can only imagine if I'd put it on multiple platforms how many we would have had. And you have a copy of that petition in your emails I sent to all the board members a little after 6 o'clock today. But I feel like the community has covered tonight everything that I would have covered. And oddly enough, today, I felt led to go in a different direction. So I just, I think the 90% of the people that answered the survey back in the early fall that was sent out regarding the mask-wearing, 90% wanted high school students felt like it was okay for them to shed their mask. And 79, almost 80%, felt like it was okay for the elementary school kids, too. And I hope, I hope that you guys review those results. To my knowledge, you never release them to the public, at least not from the school board. And I think that we were well-represented here tonight, that 80 to 90%. So I'm going to go in a different direction and thank our community for allowing me to spread my wings tonight. I want to talk about The Art of War. The Art of War was a document that was written by Chinese military strategist named Sun Tzu. And in it, while it was taught in the military, it's been taught in our colleges. And in it, he talked about the four stages in subverting a nation. The first is demoralization, which we see when we take bibles and such out of the schools. And that happened over decades and decades of time. After that came demoralization, I'm sorry, destabilization. And that happens when you see riots and injustice and rebellion and lawlessness flood the streets. Then after that is crisis. And that's where we are right now. We are in crisis. And the mask-wearing narrative would seek to throw us into normalization, which is the fourth stage of subversion. Subversion is a way, it's a military tactic, to take over a nation without ever shedding a drop of blood. And you'd have to be blind not to see that that's where we are. And so the mask-wearing narrative would seek to throw us into normalization where we start thinking that child abuse is normal. And it's never going to be normal. We're never going to let that be normal. Do you know in Czechoslovakia, when it was overthrown in 1968, Brezhnev said, now the situation in brotherly Czechoslovakia has been normalized. He's made that statement as tanks roll down the streets. And as we see our children roll by in their school buses, I can almost see the same. They're covered with masks, they're in bondage. And it is not okay. It is child abuse, and we are over and done with. And I would suggest to the board, we add another pillar of character, and it would be righteousness. Righteousness is not religion. It's not holiness. It's just doing and saying what is right. We just want you to do what is right. We don't ask you to do much more than that. And when you stand up and you fight for our children and you do what's right, we will not stand against you. We will stand with you.
Thank you. James, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this. Okay, thank you. Followed by Simona Jackson.
Okay. So I'm a teacher in the system. And I teach at the Tech Center. I teach electrical trades. All right, how's that? All right, let me do this. I'm a teacher at the Tech Center. I teach electrical trades. I teach electrical trades. We have to do a lot of things that are uncomfortable, but it's mandatory. When these kids get out of school and they get a job, which they will, because that's what I do, they're going to have to do a lot of things that are uncomfortable, they think are stupid. All right? It's not going to matter how much their feelings hurt, or how much their friends or their family or the governor or anybody else feels, you know? It's just what you have to do. That doesn't make me a tyrant, that makes me a good teacher, that makes me a mentor, it makes me a good electrician. All right? I have kids, they've been through the same thing, you know? They complain about it, but they understand. And I think one reason for that is because they haven't been in a context where they, you know, are caught in the middle of two different, you know, significant adults in their lives going back and forth at each other, and they have two different realities. So OSHA requires that I have a safe workspace, all right? And you haven't heard this perspective, because most of the teachers in this county are not going to come anywhere near. They're not going to come anywhere near this, because we know what's going on. I mean, we see the parents of Rockingham County's, you know, screenshots of their conversations going on, including tonight. Y'all are hilarious. And then we get to deal with, you know, the aftermath of that when their kids come. My students at school, they don't have a problem with the masks at all. And they have suffered, excuse me. They had that respect thing. I'll take a few extra seconds. So this mandate is in place because people who are experts at this, epidemiologists and the professional, excuse me.
Continue.
All right, there are no substantive arguments to why we shouldn't be masking right now. Okay? I've taken my mask off because I am six feet away from everybody else, and it's safe.
Please, let's let everybody talk, okay?
Okay. So what I'm saying is, fine, I mean, make the decision. If y'all decide, all right, this is how it goes. I have a right to a safe workspace, all right? I also have competencies from the state that say I have to teach safety, all right? So my kids are all going to be masked tomorrow, or they're not going to stay.
Thank you. Simona, Simonia, Simonia Jackson, followed by Stacy Benner. It's Simona, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay. Hello, my name is Simona Jackson. I'm a parent of two students at Rockingham, and my son is in pre-K. And I recently just found out that he was autoimmune after he received his first vaccination shot. So I say this, I'm saying this just to say that the mask mandate is important, as I wouldn't dare want anything to happen to my five-year-old. Or for my oldest daughter, who's in the eighth grade, to bring anything home to my three-year-old, who cannot be vaccinated. And then I also have a father who's at home, who is a cancer survivor. While I don't have facts in front of me, I do pay attention to the facts where it has shown that masks are a safety precaution. While we all don't agree in our personal lives, I think schools should be a neutral place for our kids to be safe and for them to have the opportunity to learn in a safe place. My daughter suffered from this pandemic as well. She was out of school for more than a year. She's always been a straight A student, she's always been the top of her class. That time that she spent away from school, because schools were closed and it was only virtual learning in the state that we were living in, her grades decreased dramatically. When we moved here last year, she begged me to go to school, begged me. And I made her promise that she would keep her mask on with her understanding that the complications that would be if she were to bring the virus home. So she went to school, and at that point, she has thrived. All the kids want to do is be in school, they want to be safe, they want to be around each other. She has joined the basketball team, she has joined various clubs, her grades have dramatically increased, back to a straight A student. So all I ask is that we keep our kids safe in school and keep the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Benner.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Stacy. I'm a parent of three boys in three different schools in the Turner Ashby School District. I am also a registered nurse. I want to express my appreciation to all of the teachers, staff, and administration who work in our county schools. It is truly a tough time to work in education. The fact is, is that everyone is struggling. Adults are struggling with the stress and anxiety that COVID has caused. There are hardly any aspects of our lives that have not been touched in some way by this virus. The stress and anxiety of living this way day to day is pushing our coping skills to their limits. I feel like people are so worried about taking steps to control COVID that they overlook the fact that our children's mental health is being negatively impacted every single day. Our children lack the coping skills to deal with all this stress that adults have had a lifetime to develop. I am very concerned about our children's mental health and the long-term toll that this crisis will have on them. I am a concerned parent. I am concerned that my nine-year-old goes to speech therapy every week with a mask on his face trying to learn how to speak properly. This has been going on since last October. How exactly is my child supposed to work on his speech issues when his mouth and the teacher's mouth is covered by a mask? I am concerned that my 13-year-old gets yelled at in gym class almost every day when he takes his mask down to catch his breath after he runs his laps. I am a concerned parent. I understand and respect that there are many different ways to raise a child. I respect people who decide that wearing a mask is right for their family. I only ask for that same respect for my boys. My nine-year-old has asked me several times every day for the last week when he can go to school without a mask on. I wanted to read something that he wrote. This is from his journal in his fourth-grade class. My Christmas wishes. My first wish is for COVID to end. My second wish is for masks to go away at school. My third wish is so I can go to my brother's wrestling meets without a mask on. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the list of people who signed up tonight. I want to express my personal thanks to all the speakers. And I think the audience in general did a pretty good job of respecting everybody's opportunity to speak, and I greatly appreciate that. One of the things that has been asked of this board over the last meeting or two that I particularly agreed with, and that is that the community deserves to know where we stand on this issue. And we're going to vote tonight. And we're going to vote by voice vote. So there won't be any misunderstanding as to where any board member stands with regards to this issue. What I do ask is that you respect whichever side of the issue you're on, the way that vote works out. And I would encourage you all to stay to the end of the meeting through school board questions and answers afterwards, after we get through that. Next, we're going to move into action items, and we had some personnel listing from our closed meeting, and I would entertain a recommendation from the superintendent with regards to that personnel listing.
I recommend to approve the personnel listing dated January 24th, 2022, and supplement dated January 24th, 2022.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. Do I hear a motion in regard?
I move we approve the personnel listing dated January 24th and supplement dated also January 24th.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the personnel listings, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. We also had some religious exemptions from our closed meeting. Dr. Schike?
I recommend to release five students as provided by Virginia Code Section 22.1-254. Point B, point one, by reason of bona fide religious belief.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. Do I hear a motion in support of the superintendent's recommendation?
I move that we support the superintendent's recommendation regarding the students released for religious exemption.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. That appears to be unanimous as well. Next, we have need to approve the minutes as presented. Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes from the previous meeting? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or comments regarding those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous as well. Field trips. Dr. Schike?
Board members, you have three field trips for your approval tonight. Turner Ashby High School will send 30 students for DECA on March 4th through 6th to Virginia Beach. Wilbur Pence Middle School, FCC LA, March 31st through April 3rd. Seven students to Virginia Beach. And Broadway High School, Bennett Choir, March 11th through 13th. 50 to 80 students to Richmond, Williamsburg, and Washington DC. And I recommend approval of those field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion in support?
I motion to support Dr. Schike's recommendation to approve this field trips as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Okay.
I received some, an email from a parent with concerns about letting middle schoolers travel under our current policy. So I'm wondering if we can table the trip to, the middle school trip, the Pence trip, the FCC LA trip, table that to further meeting so we can review our policy. Do you want me to make a motion for that, or?
Well, there's already a motion on the floor. Ms. Lohr and I, I guess what I would ask of Mr. Cross, who made the motion, is if you're agreeable to tabling that one particular field trip?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. So that field trip will be tabled. I'm not sure of the timeline on that.
It's a March field trip.
Gotcha. Okay, we got some time.
March 31st, April 31st. Although the COVID mitigation strategies submitted with the field trip indicate that students would not be allowed to room by themselves, so it would require a parent to go alone.
Okay.
Still like to discuss it a little bit.
All right. So all those in favor of the field trips with the one exception that has been tabled, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 5-0. Rockingham County Public Schools COVID Health and Safety Plan, Dr. Schike.
Chairman Reed, members, Chairman, yeah, Chairman Breeden, members of the board. As you had already indicated, tonight will be a time for our board members to vote on potential changes to the Health and Safety Plan. As you know, I don't have a vote, and I also have no recommendation for you tonight. This presentation is simply to provide some sense of what the different pieces of the law are, what we've heard from the new administration, and also what Centerra has said. I've asked Centerra to provide some input, and so Centerra RMH has provided some information as well. And then there's the model from the American Academy of Pediatrics. So here are the legal, here's the legal landscape. You had a legal briefing earlier. And among a number of other provisions, basically, these are the three that, you know, are in play here. Constitution of Virginia, right? So the constitution at the top of the food chain, Article 8, Section 7, the supervision of schools in each school division shall be vested in the school board. Okay, so that's one of the primary provisions in the constitution about what school boards are elected to do. And laws and other provisions, such as executive orders, are of course evaluated by the courts against this provision. And the Virginia Supreme Court is likely going to rule on this, because again, there are multiple legal provisions, multiple lawsuits have been filed, the governor's team has responded, the attorney general has responded, and there's an expectation that the Virginia Supreme Court will take this topic up as early as this week. So that's ultimately when there's conflict, that some people say, well, this comes first or this comes first. That's ultimately how it's going to end up being decided, and that's the courts. Because we do have the governor's executive order saying that parents basically may elect for their children not to be subject to any mask mandate in effect at the child's school. While the General Assembly, you've heard it before, Senate Ball 1303, what does it mean when they say we need to provide full-time in-person instruction in a manner in which we adhere to the maximum extent practical to currently applicable mitigation strategies? And they actually don't say from VDH, but CDC. Okay, so those are the three legal provisions. This morning, superintendents were briefed by the governor's new team. So new guidance from VDH and DOE was released last Friday. And so this morning, Dr. Colin Green, the acting health commissioner appointed by Governor Yonkin, and Gillian Balo, the new Virginia State Superintendent appointed by Governor Yonkin, basically briefed superintendents on that interim guidance. And it is important to know, so superintendents asked all kinds of questions, and those administration officials answered those. And so in the interim guidance, you will see that close contact in the current administration's guidance is defined as being within six feet of someone for 15 minutes or more. And that the exception for education that allows us to have all kids in school, so the three-foot exception for close contact definition, only applies if both students wear a mask. So that's in the current administration's guidance as well. Quarantine and isolation duration does depend on mask-wearing. The new CDC guidance is now approved by VDH. We adopted it a little while ago, actually. And again, it provides that five-day shortened quarantine and isolation are only permissible under certain circumstances, including a mask on days six through 10. And so in other cases, if a student is not willing to wear a mask, again, the isolation or quarantine goes to 10 days. Now, there are always two exceptions to quarantine, and that's important to know, because we typically talk about students who are fully vaccinated, but there is that second one. It's also an exception if a student tested positive within the last 90 days, but it has to be a lab-verified positive test. You can't take a rapid test at home for this. And those apply, but we have to realize a vaccination rate is below 50% for school-aged children. So again, hypothetically, this could, it always depends on the circumstances, but it affects how many students would need to be quarantined, again, under the updated guidance from the Yonkin administration. Test to stay is encouraged, and the governor has made so many statements already about these other mitigation strategies. So if a student doesn't show symptoms, otherwise would have to quarantine, they can participate if enough tests are available in a test-to-stay program. We have already signed up for it. Three-hour schools will participate in the first stage, and then others can join, but only permitted if the students are masked. Federal rules still apply to all transportation, including school buses. So that order is in effect until at least March 18th. And then, again, it can be extended, but may not be. And finally, for staff, masks are required by the Department of Labor and Industry. So this is really an issue about student masks. I contacted Centerra, because we've seen, when you look over the last 28 days, right now, there are 119 COVID hospitalizations over the last 28 days in the, in Rockingham County. So this doesn't include the city of Rockingham County residents. That's 32% higher than at any previous time during the pandemic. It's, the hospitalization rate is low, but a low percentage of a really big caseload is still overwhelming the hospital. And so I just asked Centerra whether they could provide some information to us from their perspective. And so just this afternoon, I received a video message from Centerra. So this is about four minutes long, and then I only have one or two more slides.
Hello, my name is Dr. Robert Baldwin, practicing surgeon and current vice president, chief medical officer, and power of the medical system. I'm also part of four boys of Law II or currently going to school in the Rockingham County school system. I would ask to provide medical and scientific insight to the topic of mandatory vaccine schools. Currently, Rockingham County is seeing record high line of new COVID-19 cases from the Omicron variant, as the paramedics are COVID testing and seeing positivity rates in the 45% or 50% range, and 35% to 40% patients admitted to the hospital or further part of the public, about 85% are unvaccinated individuals. While the sound policy, based on peer-reviewed scientific evidence, has enabled us to continue to provide high-quality healthcare to this community through these difficult times. As we continue to face this new COVID strain, we know that masks are an effective tool for better traditional spread of the virus. Not only will it help us keep students safe, it will help us better protect teachers, school staff, and family members at home. Our educators and school boards, as the public health policies were to keep our children in school and obtain the education, athletics, and social action they require in a safe environment. As Centerra, we recommend following the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines that will recommend all elderly individuals to receive a COVID-19 vaccine, and those older two-year-olds, in addition to all school staff, will face masks as a course of mitigation efforts for the continuation of new person-wearing and prevent the spread of the virus in schools and surrounding communities they serve. In addition to vaccination, multiple studies have shown a direct correlation between masking and low transmission rates of the spars within schools. These include a study for kindergarten and 12th grade students in North Carolina that was completed by Duke University Research, working with ABC Science Corporation. This study showed that schools with high masking requirements reveal lower incidence of COVID-19 infections amongst students and staff of their parents in surrounding counties. In this study, schools that did not mask had a three-and-a-half times higher rate of COVID-19 rates than those that did mask. Normally, students with masking requirements did not vary the data that the students of all ages were able to comply with masking requirements. More recent studies looking at over a million students and staff in school districts that were included, in Wisconsin and North Carolina, consisting of districts and urban, suburban, and rural settings, showed what we low transmission rates of COVID-19 in schools with masking a part of the mitigation strategy were compared to the surrounding counties. This resulted in less net lost school days for children due to quarantine. A study in Nebraska showed that quarantining for students due to in-school secondary exposure was not necessary, while contact between an unaffected and affected person with masks and masks, again, allowing for continued education, less of the school days from CDC-recommended 10-day quarantine of children and staff. Conversely, there are no scientific evidence found in studies that masking negatively detects positive or harmful levels in the blood, including those individuals with underlying lung disease such as CACD. Findings were confirmed in a study of elementary school children as well. The initial studies have not demonstrated that mask-wearing causes depression or anxiety in children. And research done by the UTEC, who are probably found that children are very From a scientific perspective perspective, the data is clear, and the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations are well founded. If the goal is to continue inverse education in a safe environment, limit lost days of school, and help keep the spread of the virus eradicated to a minimum, the use of mask-wearing in schools is an essential education strategy. Centerra will care. Thank you.
So you've seen the legal landscape. You've seen the new administration's guidelines that do indicate that students with masks or without masks would end up with different quarantine lengths, and also, in fact, it would affect students with masks if an unvaccinated student were to test positive because it would go to six feet. You've heard from Centerra. Finally, the American Academy of Pediatrics. The Virginia chapter of the AAP actually endorsed a plan for optional masks, and what they said is quite powerful. There has to be some sense of what it would take to get rid of masks. And so the American Academy of Pediatrics has said, "Look at community spread at the two highest levels, so either high or substantial masks should remain mandatory. Masks could become optional when a community spread is moderate or low," and that in those cases, the only time masks should become mandatory is we then find significant transmission in school, right? So if it then causes that transmission. But in general, that would lead to optional masks. And under these guidelines, for example, the last four weeks of school last year would have been with optional masks, right? So it's important to understand that the AAP, you know, and by the way, I also received a phone call from Bluestone Pediatrics today saying that all four, all the physicians in the practice strongly urge that masks continue to be worn. I forwarded you that information earlier today. So these are the voices from physicians, from pediatricians, or their organization at least, and from the governor's team in terms of VDH and DOE. Now, I'll also say that the governor is, you know, very much aware that ultimately, like I said earlier, this will be decided by the courts. And on Saturday, he tweeted the following, "While the legal process continues on the parental opt-out of mask mandates for the children in schools, I urge everyone to love your neighbor, to listen to school principals, and to trust the legal process." Again, knowing that until the courts speak, what local school boards decide should be followed. Any questions?
Board members, any questions of the superintendent? Board members, this has been a long and arduous journey. I've not talked to anyone, including the four of you, and five, including Dr. Scheichel, who likes the idea of wearing masks. And there has to be a way forward, an endpoint for it. We had been in discussion for some weeks prior, in the last calendar year, about a path forward to optional mask usage. We've heard a lot of compelling stories from you tonight on both sides. I know that we've all read extensively on the topic. We each hold our own personal views. And here's the thing, at the end of the day, this is going to be settled by the courts. And all of us at this table have taken an oath to defend the laws of the, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States of America. So whatever, so whatever the courts decide, we will abide by. But what we have right now is that if we choose to accept the governor's executive order, we are in violation of SB 1303. If we accept SB 1303, look, folks, I did not interrupt you. All right? Thank you. We are in violation of SB 1303. But there is the constitutional thing that says that the control of local schools is vested in the local school board. And until the courts decide it, we've got to make a ruling one way or the other. And I am prepared tonight to move that we continue with the mask mandate until the second meeting in February, at which time we will reevaluate community spread and see if there is a way forward, recognizing that if there is a ruling by the court, that that would change, and we would abide by the ruling of the court. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a lot to say. Well, my vote is no. I do not want a mandate, I will not vote to mandate for our children to wear a mask anymore because I do not believe that Senate Bill 1303 is the law. And I want to, I want to make, I want to say just a few things and be short, but on August 5th is when Governor Northam came out, and he told his school districts that it was the law to wear masks at schools. During that time period, there were several school divisions throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia that didn't listen to the governor and said, "We're going to still make masks optional." During that time period, on August 12th, I believe it was, Governor Northam came out with his public health order stating that masks would now be mandated. During that time, on August 12th, the patron of Senate Bill 1303, Siobhan Donovan, Senator from Henrico County, who wrote the bill, has emphatically stated that that bill was not a mask mandate bill. And I believe that Governor Northam knew that. That's why he had to release his public health order to mandate it because it wouldn't have held up within the courts. And so tonight, as we go for whatever the vote is tonight, I want to provide hope for the community because I believe the majority of the community does not want to mask their children, or at least wants that option as parents, whether to mask your children or not mask your children. And I believe that's your right as parents. And I, as a school board member, I don't believe that I, as a school board member, have that right to take away your rights. And so I want, I want to say this because the last thing that I want, I moved here in 1990 with my parents. This is, this is my home. We chose to stay here and to live. I grew up in McGaquesville. I attended Montevideo Middle School. I graduated from Spotswood High School. And this community is incredible, compassionate community. And the last thing I want to see is on the nightly news at TV3 or written in the DNR tomorrow, how crazy and outrageous the people of Rockingham County were that didn't want to follow whatever this board made tonight because that's not who we are. Listen, it's going to get worked out in the courts. And I believe it's going to get worked out pretty quickly as we see today that the Virginia Supreme Court is already picking up Youngkin's case, the Governor Youngkin's case. So have patience, whatever this is. I didn't get together with any other board members. I don't know how they're going to vote. But have patience through this, and no, we've been almost two years now through this. And the last, and just have patience through this, that we're going to get through this process. And I believe, I personally believe that they're going to rule that Senate Bill 1303 was never intended to be a mask mandate law, and that it's not a law, therefore, the law that Youngkin's been quoting about the upbringing, education, and care of parents' rights is going to be withheld, withhold, was going to be withheld there, and the executive order will as well. So have patience with that. And the last thing I want to say real quick, Chairman Breedman, is tomorrow, whatever decision is, have patience as parents in the community with your principals. They have built, they've done their best. It's not their decision as principals, okay? Have patience with your principal, have patience with them because they're not the ones that made the decision here tonight. If you've got a problem with this decision tonight on the Rockingham County website, there are emails of every single school board member here tonight and our telephone numbers. Contact us because we're the ones tonight that are having to make this decision. Yeah, I've told you where I stand on it, but please have patience with the principals that are only going to go by what this board sets, and have patience with Dr. Scheichel as well because he's not making the vote here tonight. School board members are making this vote, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Anyone else?
Vote in. We can vote out. When is the trial coming?
What I would, I wanted to share something that I find of interest. And I want to share here the Georgetown Preparatory Schools COVID policy. And this is on the, listen, I'm going to, listen, listen to me. I am going to say my piece. Georgetown Prep is committed to a fully operating on-campus program this year, providing each student with the full experience that Prep has to offer. The vaccination policy, effective July 202021, Georgetown Prep mandated the COVID-19 vaccine for students, faculty, and staff. The only exceptions made to this mandate were for those with religious exemptions. At this time, Georgetown Prep requires all persons, regardless of vaccination status, to wear masks while indoors on campus, except while eating meals. Masks must also be worn during any indoor school-sponsored activity. Now, the reason that I read that is because that's where, that's where Governor Youngkin sends his kids to school.
That's his right.
That is exactly his right. Okay. Let's, I'll, any other discussion? Go ahead, Dr. McQuilkin. I'm sorry. Listen. Dr. McQuilkin? Dr. McQuilkin? We have, we have sat and listened to the comments tonight. Thank you.
Six patients with COVID. Ask Centerra.
Thank you.
Today.
Thank you.
About 100 and something.
Thank you.
Yes, my doctor said it was bad.
Thank you.
Today. Happy Easter.
Listen. Can we, can we conclude? We're going to vote. We're going to, after everybody has an opportunity to say what they want to say. Go ahead, Dr. McQuilkin.
It is, it is good for me to see the number of people who are here this evening because you're interested in your schools, you're interested in your children, and I believe each and every one of you would like to see your children stay and keep these schools open. All along, I have not viewed this as a political issue. I have viewed this as a health, public health issue, and we as a community, together, must conquer this virus and keep our schools open. So how do we do it? We have to look at all of the children, all of the staff, all of the people in our schools, the most vulnerable. I'm so glad this evening we heard from some parents of special ed students because they are among the most vulnerable. We've heard about people who have family members and staff who have family members who are vulnerable. We must do this together. We are a caring community. How many times, when a house is burned down, have people not come together and help the people whose houses have burned down? We are looking, we are looking to work together to keep our schools open.
Is this in favor of the majority of our constituents?
Yes.
The majority is this.
Okay. Any other discussion, board members? Any other discussion? I will ask the clerk to read a roll call vote.
Can you read it?
Okay, I'm sorry, I've been asked to restate the motion. Okay, I'm sorry.
I was going to say.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. The motion is to continue with the mask mandate until the second meeting in February, and at that time, consider community spread and the legal determination based upon where the courts are, and with the eye toward, and this is just my editorial, the eyes toward moving toward an optional, an optional masking. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, if you will make a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, I just got a message. The microphone was cut off from the live feed while he was speaking. Is there a reason for that? It was cut off during his live feed. It was not cut off here. It was cut off when he went home. I'm getting messages.
Okay. Okay. Let's, Miss, Madam Clerk? Aye?
No.
Aye.
No.
Motion carries three to two. Next, we will move to school board questions and answers, and I will begin with Mr. Falk. Mr. Falk? Pass. Ms. Lohr? Dr. McQuilkin, we, we, Dr. McQuilkin, do you have any questions or answers? Mr. Cross, do you have any comments?
Thank you. You tell me, I'll pick them up.
Thanks. All right. Any, any comments, Mr. Cross? I'm sorry, the meeting has not been adjourned. We'll be happy to, we'll be, we'll be happy to receive your information afterwards.
It's over. We say it's over, girls. I'm not supposed to be here. Going to school with no masks.
All right. All right.
Thank you. I don't know. It's on the, it's on the website. Absolutely.
You're getting the pass.
Yes.
I think I did it wrong last time, too. Thanks for staying.
Is Mr. Nicholson still here?
What's today's date again? 20th? 24th, sorry.
Is Mr. Nicholson still here? I'm sorry.
Yeah, welcome. Where'd you guys go at? He's wrong. All right.
I just, I would make my closing comments to say that with regards to Mr. Nicholson's comments, the statement that was made about the not having the knowledge to know what you don't know was actually made concerning an antique car debate that I was having with a, with a person as I restore antique cars. I do tend to like Western movies, and I do tend to occasionally post things on my Facebook page about Westerns that I like. With regards to the shake and bake, I had just heard that Chase Elliott and Kyle Larson and Alex Bowman were going to run the Chili Bowl, which I thought was pretty cool. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is there's a life outside of this, and don't read too much into what goes into the, to the social media. So, okay. All right. Anything else?
Yep. What's up, big guy?
Hearing nothing else, we'll declare this meeting adjourned.
Y'all are awesome, man.
I appreciate it.
Signatures. If you have a pen, come here.
If you have a pen, come here.
Absolutely. Thanks, man. Hey, man. Hey, man, I, I know. I know. That's all right. Luke. Yeah. Yep. What's up, big guy? How are you, man? Hey, I heard, I heard you, what, Shenandoah University? No. Bluefield, that's right, that's right. Awesome, man. Good football, even, too.
The decision was to continue mandatory masks until
See you here soon, brother. God bless you, man. What's up, big guy? How are you, man? You're responsible, too, ain't you?
Um, can be reevaluated.
Mm-hmm. Or until Oh, my gosh. Me, too, man. I'm me, too. What's up, big guy? What's going on, man? How are you? Doing good. We got a pen out of the pen drawer.